The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Special White Pine County Commission Meeting, June 4th, 2021.
Good morning, and welcome to the amended special joint meeting of the White Pine County Commission and the Fire Commission on this Friday, June the 4th. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge? You may be here new, why don't you join me, just?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and as normal on our agenda, the first moment is for silence, meditation, prayer, or whatever you'd like, so let's take this first moment. Okay, we'll get into the meeting right off the bat, and the first item on there is a public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone line? Anyone on the phone that wants to speak? Very none, we'll look through the audience, is there anyone in the audience with public comment? Please come forward, state your name, and... Very none, I'll ask one more time, anybody on the phone line? Anybody in the audience? Okay, George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the safety guard railing was removed from around the Murray Creek overflow ditch, and runs behind the gazebo, the barbecue stands, and now the veteran's sign needs to be replaced. There's a falling hazard in that area, and needs to be addressed before someone becomes hurt. In particular, older people that may suffer a broken hip. The railing was there for years, it was taken out when they were building the gazebo, and they failed to put it back in. That's a safety hazard, we need to address that. Mr. Chairman, at the Journal Record meeting held on May 25th, 2021, there was an agenda item regarding a ski resort update, it was given by Commissioner Bullis. I asked for the written report and assessment that is required for those receiving group tax monies. I was refused because it might negatively, excuse me, impact an interested party who might face competition in the project. What a bunch of bull. All studies performed by any consultant with and using taxpayers' money may not withhold information from the public. This appears in another cloak and dagger fiasco that the county went through with the old public health officer, which is now costing taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars more. Need to stop that. That consultant's report needs to be made available to the interested public. No ifs, ands, or buts. Mr. Chairman, your plan, the commission continues to selectively enforce established ordinances, and does not act on the actions presented to them, they selectively enforce a longer colored bar. They need to go. They're still going with the sound system. I've not seen any correspondence or any kind of action, been sure that they're gonna do that. We spent thousands of dollars on the system, and then we don't use it, and those that are hearing impaired sit there in silence. Not gonna continue, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, to date, I'm not receiving any information from you regarding the Victims' Fund. Again, I pay thousands of dollars, and I want equal protection under the law. I wanna know who is going to pay for the damages and the step to park. I want the equal protection, that they're in good debt. No difference. Mr. Chairman, to date, I've seen nothing in regard to the county pulling the support from the Heritage Park, and I wanna remind you, your primary concern should be child safety. You're ignoring the facts. You do not build a truck stop next to a school. National study, you've had two incidences now, and yet I've seen nothing on your agenda to address that concern. Mr. Chairman, at your last commission meeting held on April 28th, 2021, concerning the sale of county-owned property, you stated you talked to city officials and told street lighting and fire hydrants were not required. Again, you're grossly misinformed. Street lighting, and the rest needs to go in just like any other entity. You gave out a sweetheart deal. You're competing against the private sector. Private sector has to put in street lighting, fire hydrants, so on and so forth, not the taxpayer. Those that develop, you're ignoring that.
And three minutes, George, we've got to notice, so thank you very much for your comments.
I need some answers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Get older.
Is there anyone else with public comment? In the audience, anyone on the phone? Okay, without seeing or hearing them, we'll go right into the meeting. And the first item on the meeting is item A, number one A, and it's the Public Defender Contracts. Item A is discussion for possible action, the approval of public defender contracts as submitted for Jane Everhardy, Kirsty Pickering, and Richard Sears at a base cost of $164,430 each, plus additional costs for including $125 per hour for death penalty cases, $100 per hour for other complex litigation, and $100 per hour for domestic violence cases originating in the city of Ely that are not cited to the Ely Municipal Court, or as may be scut and amended during the commission meeting. Elizabeth isn't here, but James Beecher will be addressing this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm presenting this on behalf of Elizabeth Francis. She informed me last week, she had a phone conversation with Marcy Reva at DIDs, with the current public defenders and herself. They threw that meeting, they sorted out all the questions that everybody had, came to a proposed contract, that was then drafted and submitted to DIDs. DIDs, Marcy Reva at DIDs had one more suggestion.
Would you explain what DIDs is?
Oh, DIDs is the Department of Indigent Defense Services. So this is what oversees public defense in the state of Nevada now. They had one additional adjustment, very minor, it was just in how the reimbursement was going to be made for investigative services, expert witnesses, and the contract said by the court, and the court would order that. There's a lot of closed laws that might change that, so we just changed that to in accordance with the statute, chapter seven of the statute, because that's gonna control whether the court does it, or whether somebody else is approving that. At the end of the day, it looks like everybody had come to an agreement on this, Elizabeth had no further concerns, so I'll take any questions if I can answer them, or if Ms. Everhardy's here, she can answer them, if you have them. But I think the recommendation at this point would be to go ahead and accept and approve this contract.
I have a question. Right here, it says, for domestic violence cases originating in the city of Ely, that are not set to the Ely Municipal Court. Does that mean the county, the public defender, the county's paying the public defenders to litigate these, those cases originating in the city of Ely?
Yes.
Is there any compensation coming back to the county for those particular cases?
No, not currently. So here's where we're sitting with that. In 2019, I believe, Supreme Court came out with a case that basically said, domestic violence charges, even misdemeanor domestic violence charges, the defendant is entitled to a jury trial because of the potential loss of gun rights. Currently, the way the law sits, there's an NRS on the books that specifically states the municipal court cannot do a jury trial, they have to do bench trial. So there's no way to really square that circle. The way we addressed that at the time was to have DV cases cited in the Justice Court, because the Justice Court is permitted by statute to do jury trials, and that's how we're going to proceed. Right now, there's a bill, AB 42, that gives the municipal court authority to do jury trials, that has been passed by both houses, it's sitting, waiting for the governor's signature. Once the governor signs that, it goes into effect January 1st. January 1st, I had an actual conversation with the sheriff, I believe it was yesterday, yesterday, and basically, if the governor signs it, the second it goes into effect, those will be cited in the Ely Municipal Court, and they won't be a burden to the county at that point. But, you know, honestly, we, as you've seen through negotiations and other matters, we did not approach the city on this, basically because it's something that we just, we just have to do. You know, we have to prosecute these cases, the defendants are entitled to these rights, so it's just something that my office and the public defenders have been doing since. I will note that I don't believe they have asked for this additional compensation since 2019, is that true, Jane?
Yes, that's correct.
So this has been the case for a couple of years now, and this is the first time that they've asked to be compensated, because it technically isn't, you know, the county cases that they're supposed to be handling. But they've handled it, we've handled it, I don't think either side really loves that, that we've had to handle that, that's, you know, this is what the Supreme Court did, and now the legislature seems to be addressing that, so hopefully it won't be an issue for long, as long as that bill gets signed by the governor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody got a question?
How many of those cases are we seeing, on average?
Gosh, it's hard to put a number on it.
I would say that we probably have, maybe between the three public defenders, we probably have maybe ten right now, sitting there. I will say, a lot of them do get resolved, and they don't go to trial, but it's because of the jury trial, it takes up a lot of time on the state DA's side, as well as on our side, which is why we're looking to get that compensation outside the contract.
And, yeah, not one has gone to jury trial yet that originated in the city, or otherwise. I guess we have one scheduled for later this month, but I'm not sure, do you know? I'll tell you in a minute. Are you on that?
I'm not on that, I believe that's Rich Sears.
I don't know if that one is actually originated in the city or in the county, but it looks like our first potential misdemeanor DV jury trial will be going forward later this month. But they're not super common, and that's just kind of, and again, I think this is gonna be a temporary issue, resolved within the next six months.
And it's not a full-blown, it's like six jurors as opposed to 12, so it's a reduced type, it's like a short trial, almost, so we all are anticipating a one-day pick the jury, put on the evidence, and get a verdict in one day.
Although, yeah, AB 42 does change that requirement to 12 jurors.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yes. The legislature thinks.
Does anyone else have anything on this item, what's on the agenda? And you've reviewed this, you've talked to the public defenders, and Elizabeth's been on this, and so we're good, or what?
I have answered questions that were brought to me. As you know, I've kind of tried to stay out of this for the most part, and that's why Elizabeth was working with Marcy Reva at DIDs on this. There were a couple of questions that Elizabeth had, that I did answer, in those parts, I did review it. I have, you know, I'm familiar with this document over the years of them being our public defenders, but yeah, there's no issues I'm aware of at this point.
Thank you, so, just to make it clear, so you're not voting on this, but you're supporting this?
I am relaying, so I really wanna stay out of this.
I got you.
So I am relaying Elizabeth Francis's recommendation that the council, the commission does approve the contract.
I have a quick question. In regards to the Department of Indigent Defense, when we talked about, was that just cleanup or understanding as far as the questions there? So, I mean, there isn't anything then that changed within the document itself?
No, I believe there were some things that changed.
Okay, so it was language, certain language, and how we define certain things.
Because I haven't seen one changes.
Yeah, this is a pretty quick hook, Miss. We had, last week, we had the meeting, this week, we had our final edits, earlier this week, and here we are, that's why you guys got it, as a handout instead of part of the deck.
Well, I mean, usually sometimes we'll see colors in regards to changes.
The red lines, yeah.
I think Elizabeth had that copy, because we did send that to her, so we were all kind of working off of what, because she had some changes, and then we had some changes, and then DID said, this is how it has to be changed to. And so, we worked on it, I think it was Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday of last week, and then got it all finalized with the attachments, and...
We know it was fast. Absolutely.
So, for example, one of the changes that was substantive that I'm aware of, if you look on page three, we have paragraph F, complex litigation.
Yes.
Elizabeth's proposal was that it only be capital murder, I think the public defender's original proposal had a number of other cases, capital murder death penalty, and then sexual assault cases as defined by the statute. So that was kind of one where they met in the middle, decided through Marcy Reva's interpretation of what her responsibilities are at DIDs, and kind of came out to middle ground a lot. So it's those kinds of changes, nothing drastic is different, but there are some minor substantive changes that were made through the negotiating process, but again, I think all parties that were involved that were satisfied with the way that it came out.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? And very none, and seeing that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve item A.
So that would be, I would move to approve with corrections and changes?
No, the backup that you have now is presented is the final bottom.
Okay, so it doesn't, okay, that's, I move to approve.
Motion by majority to approve, if you're presenting. Set to by Shane. Any further discussion? All those are favorable. I'm all right. Poked, none, action, and thank you. Thanks to the Republican Senate.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're on item, page two, item two, notice, long-timed item, it's emergency ambulance and fire services options for White Pine County. Item A, is discussion for possible action, the approval to select an option for emergency ambulance and fire services by selecting one, a modified contract with the city of Ely to provide services through the city of Ely Fire Department; two, a contract with MedX to provide emergency ambulance services, and offering a mutually agreed agreement with the city of Ely to provide fire services; two, an add needed basis; or three, another combination contracting with MedX and the city of Ely Fire Department to provide emergency ambulance and fire services. James?
So I know Commissioner Bullis at the last meeting asked for the contract language proposed by the city. I did text the city attorney during that meeting, and I left a voicemail later after the meeting. I have not received anything back, but again, this is not a short hook, so it's perhaps he got busy. I do, I am, I do need to correct the record. We had some comments in the city council meeting last Thursday that strongly implied that Elizabeth and I lied to you. It wasn't used in those words, but what the mayor said was that there was mischaracterizations, and then went on to list those mischaracterizations. One of them was what the mayor called a bait and switch. What I informed you of, and Elizabeth was standing right here, and I've since spoken to Elizabeth, and she has the same understanding as I do, is that we had one version of an offer in the last negotiation session, what was presented to the county, or the city council, was a different offer. That is true. The mayor was not even at that meeting. You know, the fact that, that not only just our positions, you know, I'm great with our positions being different, that's what negotiations are all about, but not even being able to agree on what was said, that's super concerning. I take very seriously comments that call into question my integrity. I take my integrity to the utmost importance. I don't know how to proceed with the city at this point, if they're going to be calling into question things that were even said in negotiation. And this is how, I guess, the city is choosing to proceed. I will say that this is probably going to force our hand to record any negotiation session we have with the city going forward, because, you know, it's just irresponsible, especially when you weren't there, to make those kinds of comments. What I'm here to do is just relay information to the commission, let you know what happened, what they're proposing, how we got there. Not make any, you know, personal attacks or questioning my integrity. So, anyway, that's just something I had to clear up on the record. Not much has changed since the last meeting. The only other issue I do want to highlight is, the commission heard last time from a representative of the city, that it was in fact true that they respond in certain areas, McGill particularly, when they're called. It's a material breach contract, the, that's something that if we continue with the city, we must address that, we can't let that go on. And, and the legal remedy for a material breach contract is termination of the contract, and I don't know if anybody has the stomach for that. The other remedy could be damages, but if there are damages, something really bad went wrong. So, that's, that, more important than even, even the comments made at the city council meeting, is that material breach contract, that, and that's something that I was listening for. I was hoping to hear, I heard this issue brought up, we were unaware of that issue, that will not be an issue going forward, I would love to have heard that, did not hear that at the city council meeting. So that's where we stand, so that's obviously up to the commission to decide where we go forward.
Can I ask comment, if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this during this item, or is that passed?
If there are, there are people that, for example, the city is a party to this, to this agenda item, so you can allow them to speak, the MedX is a party to this item, you can allow them to speak, also, you can always have additional public comment if you want, but that's up to the discretion of the commission.
Okay, what I'm gonna choose to do is ask anybody from the city first to come up if they have something to say, or they have a dispute, or anything, please come forward, state your name, and we wanna be fair, is what we're doing as far as to hear every side of everything.
I'll speak to what James said, he's exactly right. In that meeting that we negotiated, it was said, you know, that talked back and forth dollar for dollar, okay? But we, prior to that, Elizabeth was in Jeanette's office, they went over this 3% contract and did it. The day of the meeting, Jeanette didn't have her paperwork, she got all flustered, and she's all, "Yeah, it's about that," and I didn't look at the numbers, but I'm assuming that's, they said the numbers are about wash, okay? So yes, you're right, that did get sent to the meeting, and then what came out in the council was a 3%, but no, it wasn't somebody with blindsided. Elizabeth met with Jeanette the week prior, and then went over this 3%. So, I just wanna set that record straight, that yes, James is 100% right, in that meeting it did get sent dollar for dollar, and like I said, it's not my place to correct the financial lady in the meeting, I don't feel it's appropriate for me to do that, but I wanna set the record straight, that I do know for a fact Elizabeth had met with Jeanette the week prior, and they went over that 3% that was put on the council agenda. So, so you're aware of that part, so.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I also wanted to clear, Pat, you can correct me if I'm wrong about this, this is more for your benefit. When we throw around terms like breach of contract, that really sounds really bad, and when you were explaining what was being done, my perspective, I just wanted you to know, was that you guys were trying to be efficient, it wasn't any spiteful action.
Brett wanted to come up, we've over a couple of things. Me and Brett had a pretty long meeting yesterday, we went over a lot of things. Some of those were basically some misconceptions of people, but we got strung around, we got those ironed out. One of the things we realized hadn't been being done that's in the contract is after action reviews, so we can get with all the departments involved and do things right afterwards, and make sure everything went smooth, and we don't have that turmoil going forward, if people, you know, somebody got their feelings hurt, and then it just festers and they keep talking. You know, we discussed it, you know, between the county and the city, we've got 130 volunteers, you're gonna have personalities in conflict, that's inevitable. You have it right here in this room amongst you guys. So when you get 100 and something people, you know, it's tenfold. That stuff me and Deb Brett can deal with, you know, and we need to deal with, you know, we addressed that. I found out there's little things going on in the background I didn't know about, and he found out there's little things he didn't know about, and I said, the two of us need to just get this, nip it in the bud right away, and deal with it. You know, there ain't no room for this, you know, backbiting and stirring stuff up. We're all there for the same reason, the best public service we can give for the patient, person's house on fire, whatever it is, and, you know, that's what we're looking at going forward, so.
That's great. We've been doing this for 31 years, me and him, so it's nothing there that we've had disagreements, but we always work them out, so.
That's, this is probably the best thing I've heard in a long time.
And I said, with the deal with like going to Lund, there was miscommunication, you know, it came about that Lund would want to transport their patients, so we're like, fine, okay, they wanna transport, you gotta get the billing, they staffed an ambulance, we had a talk that, you know, if they staffed an ambulance, we'd stand down, they would transport. Well, they got to the communication that it ended up that, oh, we're just not coming. No, that ain't the case. I mean, if you guys get a call and you staff an ambulance, and you still feel you need help, we'll go, but like you said, we were not trying to put a bunch of resources in one area in case they're needed in another area, you know?
Yeah, that's one thing.
It's trying to run efficient, not trying to not fulfill the contract, or be a breach of contract or that, it's trying to run the thing efficient as we can. And that's, you know, a conversation me and him had, and some of the stuff got misconstrued, so I believe we got that corrected, but.
That's great. Yeah, I attended the meeting with them, because that's what I need to see, to know how, how I should vote properly, and yeah, that, you know, everything was talked about, one of the big things was, you know, going forward is, okay, whoever arrives on scene first needs to say, okay, you know, we can handle this, then call off, not call off before getting there. Certain little just tweaks here and there, and there was stuff on the county side that wasn't that apropos to Brett's attention, and vice versa, and it was a very, very good meeting. Out of it, they both said, yeah, we can work together, we can do this, county chiefs, but Brett told me, they all wanna keep, continue to do this, volunteers, everyone came out of this, you know, in good spirits, and willing to move, and willing to move forward together.
I've since, the last meeting, talked to most of my volunteer chiefs, and they don't care either way. They're happy either way you go. Most of the volunteers would probably soon see everybody get along, because I think on the volunteer level, they're probably more so getting along than maybe the rest.
Yeah, like I said, personality thing, you're gonna have that regardless, like I said, you know, and those are things that I told Brett, we just need to get on top of them right away when it happens, and if there's something happen, we need to drag them people in, get it addressed. If we can't come to resolve the issue, then me and him will deal with what we gotta do with the people if they can't resolve their problems.
And some of these issues too, if we've got a problem we can't quite work out, we should probably come to the boards, and let you guys help us instead of...
And I think too, both these gentlemen are new at being a chief relatively, so I think there's gonna be, these things come up, just as they get more experienced, you know? It's better.
Yep, we've been good, very, very good.
Yeah, I think with the personality issues, the one thing I've seen in the past that helps keep those in place, is very definitive procedures and protocols, and then that keeps, that keeps the battle sides out with the argument out of it, and so I think it's really important going forward, that those are something that we review and adjust accordingly, and I think that will really help, kind of bring things into play, so that there's not these misconceptions and these arguments about the way things should be done, where there's something in writing that says exactly how it should be done.
Yeah, I mentioned having, you know, me and Brett, you know, we speak pretty regular, but have a quarterly meeting with all the volunteer chiefs, and say, like, one of my guys that's the training one, so that if there is any issue, we can get them aired out, everybody face to face, and just, you know, you just gotta quell the background stuff that goes on, you know, so.
Good, that's smart.
I think that, you know, with some of the verbiage that's in here, and that maybe it needs to take, have a second look at it also.
We discussed that too. One of those things we discussed there was possibly me and Brett, and it was James and Shane, going through the contract, making sure things are spelled out, because when the con- out, because when the contract was all put together, none of the boots-on-the-ground guys that are doing the work were involved in it, so I think it'd be good if we just went through, you know, because there's little stuff that James gotta have in...